So what if you do that reverse?
It does take access first.
I don't know.
I don't know if that's true or very common.
No. That has actually been a transition because I kind of head down.
Wow.
So.
Well, you know, I think. I think it's an adjustment first.
Yeah.
Okay. No sense turning down.
Okay. I mean, this is.
Well.
Well, it's still science in the long time, which we're not.
But I thought it was pretty best.
Yeah.
Okay. I want to be.
Call drop here.
Good.
Yeah. Well. That'll be those better ones. You know, get my totally. Yeah. I feel like, oh, this is so.
Oh, that's jazz.
I'm not taking that.
Who else?
Thank you. Very good.
Okay, six o'clock will call us, meaning now the committee, the whole little township board to order.
Trustee Monica, here. Trustee Escarell, present. Trusty Brewer, present. Trusty Bowen, here. Treasurer Vito.
Here.
With Clark's present supervisor.
Here. Thank you, member. We have the agenda before study additions, relations, not motion to approve.
I want to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
There is support. All those who approve the agenda is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, motion carries. All the comments, anybody here in this audience this evening would like to speak? And then move on to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Couple of things to make you aware of. The CAA board met at 3:00 PM and they recommended approval of development and gift plans that will be coming to the township board. Shortly related, on September 16th, as I put out before, they'll be having ribbon cutting over at Delta Crossings. Starts at 10:00 AM. So for TJ Maxx, Sierra, Bob's and Hobby Lobby, I believe Bob's and Hobby Lobby are both already open. Sierra and TJ Maxx will be opening on the 16th. A lot of activity, obviously, the Amazon fulfillment center was officially announced this week. They've already, if you've been by there, they've graded that whole area. So it's helpful to have those resources. But the Kreitz Lane widening is also going on right now for the auto owners project. If you remember, the Mount Hope bike lanes, they have a first lift down on that. So it's gonna be a chance to go through there. They still have the road blocked off, but it's nice and wide. I think it's gonna be a good improvement in that area. They still have a second lift asphalt to put on there. Have pop-up shop at the mall on Saturday. And then just, I don't know if all of you know, but I sit on a municipal finance committee for the Michigan Municipal League. And so meet quarterly and just a couple of things I just wanted to make you aware of. We're hoping to pass a state budget by the end of the month. It'll be more of a kind of a vanilla budget. They'll do a more, I think expansive budget hopefully later, but this will just be to get it passed by the end of the month, which they have to. ARP funds for non-entitlement units. They started sending out money. I don't believe we've received ours as yet, but hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll receive that first installment. Also, as you know, the state has many billions of dollars that are still waiting to be spent. So there's a state allocation coalition that I think is led partially by the municipal league. But they're trying to give some guidance and help on how they can apply some of those funds versus just everybody asking for it. So some of those areas or waters were brought in, budget stay, station, housing and community development, economic development, and public health and safety. So they definitely, I think they need some help in terms of trying to figure out how to systematically spend that much money and make an impact. The governor's already put out some different programs, some with state and mobile parks, a bridge replacement and water and sewer. I don't think any of those have passed fully, but I know she's pushed those forward. So as I get more information, I'll bring it back. But I just wanted to make everybody aware of those efforts going on and potential for future funds down the road from the state level. That's all I have, but happy to answer any questions.
Brian?
Is there any guidance from Health Department that is, you should be considering going back to fully online meetings in the future?
Um, I have not, I have not, Brennan, one of all that.
Nothing has been announced. And remember before it was the state that allowed us to do that. So we would have to play our state of emergency in order to overturn to online.
I was just curious if it was on the horizon, maybe if you could, you know, prepare as a board to issue that emergency.
And I think at this point, the Open Meetings Act is still only even allows that until the end of the year.
Correct.
So unless they change the Open Meetings Act.
Other questions? Brian? Okay, great, thanks. We'll move on to the items for discussion. And first up is the fiscal year 2022 budget recommendation. Courtney, turn things over to you.
I'll share my screen. Thank you. It's nice to see this for the first time. Before we get too far into it, I just want to make sure, you know, that the board's aware that really this is a product of staff. You know, Brian and I, Marcus and the chief are here for questions, but that it is really a big effort. It's really great because they can log in and enter the information themselves for their revenue and expenditure, which is really helpful. They can, you know, use a note system so they can put in, you know, exactly what it is that I'm looking for. And that makes the process really seamless because it's already entered into our main system. So it really is a product of everyone. So, you know, prepare this kind of some of the basics, prepared in the form of the new form, Accounting Budgeting Act. We do reference a draft strategic plan, which is also on the agenda. So we did want to tie it to the draft strategic plan goals that we talked about. I know that hasn't really been officially adopted, but we did want to make sure we tied it to that where we could. Obviously, still providing high-quality services, what we consider a low cost of residence and keeping those programs and maintaining those facilities that allow us to be in great place of live work and play. Some of our goals, these are pretty standard, future capital infrastructure needs, excellent water and sewer services, continuing to fund OPEC, which I know is a very big priority of the board. Again, addressing the rules of the draft strategic plan. And then that rule of maintaining the 50% on the sign on balance and that will also be able to continue to achieve those. This slide has a lot of work, but one of the things, you know, we ran into when putting this budget together was an increasing difficulty covering operating revenue with operating expense. So, because all of you are aware, you don't want to balance your budget on the operating side of one-time revenue. So fortunately, with the way that our computer system works, we can pull out all the capital, the grants, all those one-time things, and just look at what the operating expenses are. And you really want to make sure that your ongoing revenue is covering those ongoing expenses. So as you can see this year, that number is drawing closer and closer together. And the problem with that is that we have capital needs. So this year, the majority of our capital expenditures are coming from either reserves, what we hope to use our boat, our stimulus money for, and then some we're pulling from the capital projects. But so just wanted to raise, we have another, some slides on that, additional slides on that, but just something to keep in mind. We do still have the minimum requirement of the 50% on assigned bond balance. And some just general assumptions, was a 1.5% increase for non-union employees. We have not received our healthcare renewal number yet, which is concerning. I hope to get it next week. I'm a little nervous about it from some things we heard. So we use 9%. That could eat into that operating revenue and expense if it's more than that 9%.
If you remember last year, healthcare costs actually went down. So if history proves correct, then they followed up with a huge in trouble. Yeah.
And that's, yeah. And then of course, continuing funding is very, very healthcare liability. These are just some of the things that in the memo that you guys had, we sent out on the third, also had more in-depth areas which we think the budget ties to the draft strategic goals. So I don't know if we want to talk about these now or talk about them later, but just kind of some broad things, you know, continuing to fund the fireworks. Continued sidewalk preparing meetings, which is important, continuing, you know, educating the public on what we're doing through our magazines and Delta Now. Something we did want to draw attention to was something that the Parks Commission has been working on. And Marcus can, you know, answer any questions or speak to it, but expanding the Delta Rocks concept from a one-day event to a multi-week event, kind of a Delta Rocks all summer. I wasn't sure where to put the exclamation point, so just to make sure we have the branding being correct. But that would allow us to draw a different diversity of, you know, different types of events instead of just kind of that one focus. And so it's budgeted a little bit differently where it's not just in a Delta Rocks line item. It's spread more throughout special events and contract services. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or concerns about that. I know it's kind of a newer concept and that that's a very important event for the community. You know, so we can definitely talk about that. And then, of course, infrastructure, significant infrastructure investment in terms of capital expenses.
Maybe Marcus could hit on that when we get to Parks.
Sure. Yeah. So this was a slide I just had to do, just showing the difference between taxable and assessed value. If we were looking at this in Ypsilanti, Allen Park, inner ring suburb of Detroit, you would see an extremely wide gap. It's a lot more dramatic. We were kind of, we weren't sure how it was going to come out. This is a little less dramatic, but that's because we still have new growth. Without new growth, that number gets, the gap is increasingly wider. But you can see that it is getting wider, right? So you can see that's the trend. So just sort of an interesting summary. I mean, you can see how long it took to get back to the levels of pre-2009 also, which is, or back, just back to 2009. I mean, we didn't get back to that till, what, 16, 17? You know, that recession was very impactful. So without the new growth of things like Amazon, the houses, we would see a much larger gap there. And as the land gets developed, that will continue to get bigger. So just kind of a.
Courtney, do you expect that with the build-out of Delta Crossings, that because of that significant potential growth that might level off for the next few years?
It'll be interesting to see how it does, honestly. I mean, I think that it could get closer. Yeah, I don't know that it will, you know, they're not gonna.
Not sustainably, but yeah.
But yeah, that means that kind of the Amazon, I mean, that was a large on capping. The Amazon land sold for, it was 15 million. I think its assessed value was somewhere much less than that. I mean, that's all going to be public information. So that's a large on capping, and that's not even the value of the building. So, yeah, I mean, the new growth, it just really shows how essential the new growth is. I probably should have planted like an Ypsilanti or somewhere that doesn't have that to show how dramatic their chart is. I think I saw it, we, Lansing or something. And the city just puts you in a tough position because if you don't have the open space that we have to develop things, you're only getting that rate of inflation or 5%.
So are you saying that's the intended consequences of the headway amendment?
Well, I don't know if it's intended, but that certainly is a consequence. I mean, somewhere like in Allen Park, it's pretty much built out. I mean, what can they do? I mean, yeah, you might get some little redevelopments, but having the kind of open space here is just, that seems to be what the state wanted all those years ago when they came up with this. Or I guess the person that implemented it.
Yeah, the combination of heavily improved ways.
And then the next one is just sort of where our growth is coming from right now. And the change between 19 and 20, and 20 and 21. I think it's just kind of interesting to see, you know, where those numbers are coming and see, you know, growth of the residential sector. So, yeah, there's some different information.
So is there anything that we should do as a township to prepare for that eventuality that, you know, eventually development will slow, wide open spaces won't be there anymore? Are there any steps or just things to keep in mind for the future? And I know this might be like 20, 30 years in the future, but still.
Yeah, I think it's just making sure that you keep, feels like you said, I mean, if you're at a point where that's the truth and your rate of inflation or 5% is 1.2, you're not covering even a basic, you know, healthcare increase at that point. So I think it's just being mindful of you have revenue now, but not, but just, you know, being prepared for the fact that probably the revenue that we have right now isn't going to be sustainably enough to support everything, depending on what we want to do. And if we don't want to do capital projects and do things like that, then it might be fine. But there's gonna have to be other revenue options.
That's a topic I want to talk about in the strategic plan, so that'll segue into that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think some of it is, and Delta's done a very good job of it historically over the years of, you know, making sure that we analyze our expenses and maintain adequate fund balances that are higher than a lot of municipalities to be able to, you know, react to opportunities that we have. And that's a lot of it is just kind of day-to-day, you know, it's not, it's not always been perfect. There's obviously with some of our infrastructure needs and, you know, with the building assessment, there probably could have been some more investment at different times, but you can always, even depict that in the past. I think overall, we've been pretty responsible with how we build out and how we provide services and that type of thing.
Well, and one of the things that will be an option in the future is the retiree healthcare because, you know, having that big pot of money sitting there growing right now, we're still funding our retiree healthcare benefits with current cash. We don't tap into that. At some point, it will make sense to start tapping into that if we need to and paying our premiums out of it. You know, we don't, we're not at that point yet, but that's another thing that will help in the future, you know, that's been planned for now. Most communities don't have that, for sure. They're just gonna be socking money into that from the point of view of the future. They won't be able to pull any out. Yeah, so this is kind of the operating revenue. Now, this is, yeah, the franchise fee. So we talked a lot, we talked a lot about the franchise fee, but this is taking out grant revenue, you know, one-time revenue. So this is just on recurring revenue or what was supposed to have been recurring revenue. You can see that it fell dramatically once a franchise fee was taken out. And then public safety operating budgets as a percentage of the general fund. And you can see where that is, you know, continuing to go. And we did have the large increase from the sheriff, you know, pretty large operating increase required. And, you know, that's really where, you know, 40% is a pretty big number. Again, just operating, so no light packs and SCBA and, you know, equipment for fire department.
Set with our contract with the sheriffs.
Yes. Low moderate millages, and all you guys see this every year. So we do, you know, come in very competitive with our neighbors, especially cities. Every time we're kind of in those meetings and you hear the grumbling of, you know, where's our tax dollar going? I think it's hard because people don't realize that being in a township, it's really considerable savings from a city, but that means that things like drain assessments are suffering. And, you know, that's not always obvious, but yeah, still very competitive with our neighbors. Revenue summary, you can see we do have a large transfer in, that's a mixture of ARPA and transfer from capital projects. That's all for fire capital. Although that is crazy. Stable interest is another problem. We're happily at least not negative at the moment. The problem is a fair value, everything's marked at fair value monthly. So I hope that turns around and we're positively surprised that I did not rely on it because it really hasn't, we had a good month in July and then August, it was pretty much right even again, so.
The transfers, yeah, the $2 million, is that, that's from the fund balance?
No, well, it's the capital projects fund balance of $461,000 in that ARPA. So how are the stimulus money is going to flow because we don't know which fund it's going to be used with. It could be used in ambulance, it could be used in general fund, it could be used in water sewer. It's going to go in like its own little temporary bond and then trans, show us transferred it.
Okay.
What are the, an example of other charges for services?
Oh, a good one is we pay ourselves, we pay administrative, administrative costs from water and sewer. So they pay for sunrise time, days time, a percentage of that. They pay for accounting fees, they pay back into our, because we do all their billing. So fees like that. General public expenditure by object, so types of things, personality can see is a big one. Other types of services, which would be with the sheriff's contract and then capital. This is also by object as a comparison, you're over here, I can't really quite see the bottom of this for some reason, but personnel services, supply services, same categories, and you can see it's fairly consistent. Capital's a little bit this year. Fund balance, you said, we are maintaining that on a sign on balance at over six months for 50% of operating. And then we do have assigned restricted money as well, drains, roads, not overized, set aside for sick time, vacation time cash outs. So very solid position there. Expenditure summary, can see, and we'll kind of get into some of the larger ones coming up here. But, you know, nothing to, the general activity large is because we ran the franchise fee refunds through there. So that one spiked a little bit this year. And then roads, as you know, we don't really have any road projects next year that we're partnering with the road commission on, so that's down quite considerably.
And Mary, in your area, the clerk is at, do you have potential changes?
We have elections next year.
Yeah.
2022. Yeah.
So the budget, anything on here is reimbursable unless it would be Delta Township's election. But everything else, the jurisdiction that requires the election, request the election pays for it. Every aspect of it except my time and our day-to-day time, they pay overtime, they pay none of my time. And they pay overtime postage, all of the costs that are.
Right now, like Grand Lodge, the tracking time right now to build that Grand Lodge for their sinking fund renewal in November.
So Waverly had an election this year and now we're in the middle of Grand Lodge.
Yeah, so this is the clerk's office and yes, it was a big increase over 2021. We did only include two elections, just because like I said, we were having some operating expense. And I think it would, the move us to use the elections that we already have to pay for instead of potentially having one in May, not that we put in. But and also, one thing we may need to adjust slightly is postage in this because we have to do redistricting mailing. So that's 22,000 or whatever the number is, postcards, everybody in the community. It also gives the clerk's office more time to get that in order before we start having elections. So, yeah, that's, that was a large increase. And we basically went up to 2020 numbers with the exception of only having two elections instead of three because, you know, your precinct workers postage isn't going anywhere because it's only going up. Plus the number of people getting absentee ballots seems to be pretty consistent, so.
Yeah, we had a 75% of our voters in November voted AB.
Yeah.
So that cost, that cost a lot more. And in presidential primary years, the state reimburses, they paid for the March election in 2020. The presidential primary, the state has to reimburse for, and it was 60-some thousand.
So we kind of back that out and stick off with, you know, what we make. And then there is a chance that we may need to increase our precinct worker salaries slightly because it's gonna be divided now because people are going into jurisdiction. So, yeah, some things to be aware of.
Big competition for, which is skilled workers.
Never thought you'd see the day. Okay, so let's go back on to manager's office. So this is pretty consistent, still have the HR position that will hopefully be filling soon, the training dollars, and then just 50,000 for miscellaneous consultants, you know, appointment services, et cetera. Brian, do you have any other? Comment on your log?
He'll have to add, unless there's questions.
General activity, so that one is due slightly in 2021 because the franchise fee settlements that we see, basically we were pass-through on, show up. But we do continue to transfer to our OPEC trust. That does show up now as a separate line. It's just easier for me to be able to look right at what we're heading to OPEC. Yeah, pretty consistent. So this is where like Delta Now publications, things like that come out of, anything that's sort of not attributable to one department. This one, memberships, this was a slide from last year, actually didn't change it at all. Some of the memberships that are paid, some of those might go up a little bit down. Fire Department, so that was a big operating increase. A lot of that is personnel from the newly approved union contract, which I mean, is already going to be up here shockingly at the end of 22. We did pay, 2020 was a little high because we did pay retro pay for 19 and 20, and then it came out of 21, so it spiked a little bit. But because we didn't hire everybody that we hoped to hire, it's, it's, it's a big of a bit, and then we had everybody. And this does, this between fire and ambulance, it assumes we hire everybody that we could possibly hire. We keep budgeting to that hope that we will get there, so. We did add a few things to this. Some, basically like, I don't know how you want to describe it cheap, I was just gonna mention, it's a software, it's like a company that will help you review your policies and make sure they're up to current standard. That's split actually across four different funds, but I know the chief was excited about that, just kind of updating those policies and making sure we're on the cutting edge there. The training increase, well, it's an increase from what they actually spent 2021. Awesome technical rescue training money, that's a large portion of that. And then, of course, the capital, which we outlined in the, more in the memo, but, you know, things like light packs, the Lucas machines that are the automatic distributor machines, which are really important. We have the aerial apparatus, which is something that's been talked about for a long time. It's what, 20, 25 years old?
20.
20, yeah. I feel like everybody there about 20 to 25 years old. There must have been grants 20 to 25 years ago and everybody got a new aerial and they're all coming up to you.
And the, and the thing with the aerial is it's a very expensive piece of equipment. You gotta keep in mind now that every, it's like a year and a half lead time, I think, to get the truck. Our current aerial, every time it goes in, it's, it's not exactly like $500 repairs or always, always 19,000. 24,000. You get old, it's a front, frontline truck here, but we need a new aerial, but that is a significant substantial. Like, it's probably our most expensive apparatus.
I'm not sure how much we'll get to trade or sell older ones either, so I mean, that'll be something coming in, but not a whole lot.
I have a question about the personnel services. I know that the marketplace, it's really difficult to hire and find and retain. Um, I know that the marketplace, it's really difficult to hire and find and retain. So I don't know if, if this is something, if you're looking into or, um, considering, is there anything we need to do to. Incentivize being able to retain people or even find people? Um, because I know you've struggled with that in the past, I don't know how that's going.
It's across the board, not just us, Sheriff's Department, private E M S services, we're all valuing the same people, so. We just have to get creative with how we, you know, can incentivize whether we do something in the contract or change initial pay structure for the first year. Something like that so we can compete, because we're all. All the departments, like especially Southeast Michigan, you get somebody and somebody, the more they move, the more they move, so it's, it's going to be tough for a few years.
Hopefully we're mindful when you're budgeting.
I guess, but if you remember in the last contract, we got rid of the residency requirement. That was hopeful, we were hopeful that we would not only bring in more people, but also. Hoping that would help increase diversity in our department, um, had substantial increases. Um, we applaud the chief, we do have our first person who is a, right now, paramedic only. Um, who we brought on part time and we're sending him through fire school, um, so that, that's a potential full time employee that, uh, um. Wasn't fully qualified for typical full time, but will shortly become qualified and in the meantime, fill a lot of shifts as a paramedic. Um, so, so we are looking at, you know, some different things, but it's, you know, as I said, everybody is looking for firefighters and paramedics.
Same pool of people.
Yeah, one of the other capital items that I thought was an interesting request that we were able to accommodate was the decontamination washer for deer. So cancer in the fire service is a very known issue now, and, um, so that allows them to wash things that aren't their turn out here. You can throw that in the washer, you can't throw a helmet in the washer, so this is a washer for deer, I thought that was, I mean, um, thing that we're able to accommodate, so. And then we do have a pending chemo grant, so every Wednesday, we all wait for a big breath to see if we get that call. From our congressperson saying that we got our four hundred sixty one thousand dollars for our C D A. So because if we don't get that grant, we have to buy it, we're not the point for cancer. It has to be purchased in twenty twenty two, one way or the other. So we budgeted for the full amount as a transfer from capital projects. If we do get the grant, it'll be forty six thousand dollars, it's a hundred percent match, so. But, yeah, we keep waiting. They're rolling them out, yeah, I mean, it was submitted in February and they roll them out weekly, it's very dramatic, I guess.
They're about, they've been informed last week, they're running thirty to sixteen, seventy five days behind. So the grant's supposed to be all handed out by the end of September, but they might be, just everybody's working from home.
We don't hear yes, but we don't hear no, so there's, no. Um, and then the sheriffs, which we mentioned, had a pretty significant increase there, um, sixteen percent. So the details in the memo about the cause of that, they have just astronomical retirement costs. And I applaud what they were able to do with the bridge, going from three point two to two is unheard of, but. They're still just really struggling with their funded liabilities, um, so, and I don't see that changing anytime soon, so really to keep us at the level of that fees. That we've grown accustomed, you know, of, of our increase, but again, that was another area where it was either held at zero or lower last year. And it's just easier if, if that's, I know it's nice when things have a zero percent increase, but usually that began to follow by a larger increase. And that was offset by some public safety, public health grant last year as well, so.
So did that affect Courtney, uh, is it to be expected that these sort of, uh, increases will continue just because it's kind of baked in?
They have their contract negotiation open right now, because what would be great is to at least know that, right, three year, usually you have a contract that's three years.
Right.
You know, so hopefully, I think they were going to mediation. It sounded like on their contract, so it'd be great if they could get that finalized because then we could look out three years. I don't see them making any more of a drastic pension change because that was a drastic change, um, that they've already made.
So it'll do.
From going from three point two to the two is.
Two's on there.
I mean, it's, right, it's still hot, but I mean, like, well, the three point two is obviously.
It's off the charts. The, the problem is they're on the funded liability, once you're, once you're in that row, there's no way out, so. It, it's, it's tough to, we may have, we have, at least may have some short term. Um, uh, at least knowledge of like operating costs, but I think the murders, that's, it's kind of an uncontrollable. Uh, that's really, I think, what drove these, this increase was, you know, three hundred thousand dollar increase in their retirement cost. You know, and their, um, what the, what the county pays per deputy is.
Well, it's a hundred and twenty three percent of payroll for their command officers, so everyone you're paying, a hundred and twenty three percent is going on top of that, so.
So really every command officer you're paying a double, right, position. And part of that is because they, their deputies for say eighteen or, or twenty years, they pay into that system. And then they, with the command structure, and they're there for five or six years, and then they retire out of there, so it just has not. Funded very well forward.
So that leads me to ask if the county board of commissioners, you know, have any sort of incentive to try to address this. Um, I'm assuming that we're paying a large portion of the percentage of our operating budget because they assigned deputies to Delta Township. So just anecdotally, would you think it's a disincentive for them to try to dig in their heels and try to address that issue, or is it because. They know that we're funding a large part of it?
I don't, I don't think it's any disincentive, I, I think they're trying to get a handle on it. I mean, I think they, they basically pass along the costs of, uh, what these, uh, you know, what it costs. To, to house the deputies and that type of thing. We're in the same boat with Looking Glass Fire Authority, I mean, we don't think there's any incentive to try to offset a lot of costs. I don't think we necessarily pay the full. Oh, for, you know, things like grievances and all the administrative and legal stuff that comes along with the department. Um, we'd love to see, you know, some of the costs go down, if you remember in twenty eighteen, we cut two positions from the, you know, from the sheriff's department. Last time they had the huge MERS increase, um. I don't know if I would advise doing that again, just because, you know, as we grow more, there's more, you know, more need, we can, we need the deputies, but, um. I, I don't know that there is any incentive on their, uh, on their behalf to not address the issue. I mean, I think they are trying to address it, it's just like, like most other communities that are into that issue, it's very hard to come back from, from that.
And I think if they hadn't at least tried to make such a draft that changed, you know, and I think they were business shocked that. It didn't have more of an effect on their cost, you know, I mean, I think they were expecting, well, and then, you know, MERS changes actuarial tables, and everybody lives longer. And everybody's, and then they changed their rate of return, and then everybody's back in the hole.
You know, we've got a small flavor of that ourselves, but not to distressing.
Right, right.
Just a question while we're talking about, um, sheriff's patrol. You know, at the last board meeting, we heard concerns raised about speeding, and I know it's not just an issue here. Where people drive crazy and insanely fast rates of speed. Um, but I do believe having officers out on the roads. Has an impact on the speeds, especially when we're more frequently seeing cars out on, patrol cars out on the road. Uh, what do we usually staff? Like, how many deputies do we have and how often are they, and, and that they, I don't know if there have been any conversations just since last week, but. Do we have sufficient staff to try and keep some vehicles kind of rotating around? Or are they constantly just responding to, to calls? I don't.
I, I think it, I think it depends, I mean, Ross would probably be the best person to ask, you know, or bring in, and he can answer those. I mean, we do have, um, you know, on given nights, I think we have four, five, or six folks on around, uh, around the clock. Um, I can't remember the total number of deputies, I think we have.
Twenty one.
Twenty.
Do they work eight hours or twelve? They work twelve.
A lot of our shifts. Um, so, and they do, um, they do target certain traffic areas. Um, they're out in the mornings, very much school traffic, and we respond to, you know, complaints and stuff, they're certainly. Um, you know, it seems like it, it have picked up lately on Saginaw, or, you know, the, the cut through streets has always been a complaint, at least. The six years I've been here, it's kind of comes and goes, but it's always a problem, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah, and this is probably a conversation for another time, um, necessarily budget related, but. I don't know particular, in particular what the city of Lansing did, but I know that was becoming like the number one complaint is speeding, and I know coming down Saginaw. Sidely downtown and going home, um. It, it just shocks me, the speeds people will drive and leaving in and out of cars, and it continues into Delta Township. I just can't believe the speed, so I don't know what all they're doing, and if that started having any impact, but I think we will. Practices and things we change to try and help reduce the speed, and it's, it's just, people drive crazy. I don't know what happened during COVID, but it seems like something shifted and it is not safe, it is so dangerous. I just, I, I can't believe the way people drive.
They, they definitely, I, I think every police department, uh, really cut down on traffic tickets during COVID. I don't, we really want to be making.
Yeah.
A lot of contact, I don't know if that, uh, so that's, I can get some data from Ross on that.
Well, and there weren't as many cars out down the road, there were a lot of things were different, but something has changed, but now the roads are busy and people drive. Appropriately fast, so.
Actually, last year with fewer cars on the road, traffic fatalities increased, so people did start driving crazy when the roads were empty and they probably continued.
Yeah.
Oh, you see them speed up to run a red light.
All the.
Yeah, low, down a ways, they know it's going to turn red, they'll speed up and go through it. Not only go through it red, but go through it red ten or fifteen miles an hour faster than they were.
Right.
On approach, it's just unbelievable.
Sorry.
You have to believe in the point, but you know, when we have that discussion, you know, maybe we talk a little bit, what are, are there any technology solutions? You know, to invest in that point, address that to some degree.
We, I mean, we do have, we do have three or four speed signs that when we get complaints, we'll, we'll run around in the neighborhood and we'll actually track. Uh, the speeds, um, so we use those a lot in that cut through, and typically, I haven't looked at that data recently. I mean, typically, I mean, they do dump that data, it's not quite as bad as what people think, but when it's your own road, it always feels like everybody's speeding, but.
Through children in your yard.
Yes.
Parks and recreation, so basically we budgeted for the three projects you see here this year in twenty twenty one, and they were not done. Because of grant agreements, um, were slow to come from the state, federal governments, so those have all been pushed into next year. So that's basically the, the change in parks is, um, pushing both. Projects, we do have grant funding to offset a portion of them.
So Courtney, on the Capitol Ave, the amended twenty twenty one, is that basically the twenty twenty two recommendation carryover?
Basically, yeah.
For the same, for the projects that hadn't initiated at all in twenty twenty one, okay.
Yep, and then a piece of equipment. Pretty much the same. And then the following year will be the two pathway based projects and, uh, uh, I don't know, one hundred quarters, those will be twenty twenty three projects now. And then that, and then also the Delta, the Shark Park, right? So that's the other third grant for twenty twenty three. So still have a lot on the table there for grants, it'll be nice to start getting some of those knocked out. Other township funds.
The free movement was Marcus going to talk about his.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I think the theme Delta Rocks all summer, uh, obviously, you know, we drew on the, the Delta Rocks, kind of. Getting away from Delta Rocks, and, and as I've shared many times, um, we're under a lot doing COVID and out of COVID in terms of programming and running events and. Looking for smaller events and so on, you know, it's really happy to work very close with our commission because they, um, had a stake in the game in terms of what we were offering, kind of reviewing what we're offering. Seeing, seeing what we're drawing, diversity of events, locations, and so on, and so on, and so on. So what we decided to do, um, you know, was to expand on, on some of those smaller events, because, you know, when you take a look back. Over the last year, you see the music in parks, that we had at Shark Park, for example, you know, we saw on a certain night, uh, the Eldwood population, if you will, really came out. For, for one of the bands, and then, you know, we had a twenty and thirty sentence come out for them. Uh, so we really were excited with the folks that we attracted, uh, you know, for those movies in the parks that we did. Out of Mount Hope, we were also a big trial, uh, we moved the money ball drill three out of Mount Hope. Uh, in, in terms of being, getting away from the mall, um, really more so because the mall had a challenge to build this park a lot. But, um, we also experimented with having events throughout the weekend, you know, one Friday night, we had movie at the parks, and Mount Hope, we had the money ball on Saturday and Sunday. So from a staffing standpoint, we were able to have one location, but also be efficient in terms of, of having more events. So what we decided for, for twenty twenty two was, it was like I said, to expand on those, but. Taking advantage of the success, we have movies in a park, um, doing a smaller kiss festival, movies in a park in, uh, June. Fireworks, uh, movies in the parks, Kid Mind Run, a movie in the parks in July. Uh, August, expanding the fact that we were doing movie at the parks on Friday, money ball, uh, on Saturday and Sunday, and added an evening component of beer craft festival. And we're going to local group now, you know, we're going to have craft beer, uh, out, out on the Mount Hope in the evenings on the Saturday to expand. Uh, on that, um, so we're really looking to add these type of components to everything that we do, anything from, from food trucks. You know, ethnicities, I shouldn't say ethnicity, but cultural events and cultural components, uh, arts and, and volunteers, um. We've done, one of the things we did during COVID, uh, when we had people going into the, so before COVID, we had an artist display, this, this, his work in, in Richmond Center. Drew a lot of folks taking a look at it, so we wanted to expand it, maybe do a month with, have different artists show their work, their look to work, artists into some of our events. And, and, you know, we've also been able to generate some assistance with this, we're going to be meeting in the next couple of weeks. With the combined group that Howard is, is leading of Delta Wave and Rotary Club, Kwanzaa's group of Delta, the Delta Sub Business Association. Because what we learned is, when we did these movies in the parks, we have businesses that were looking to get back and wanted to be involved. And they responded, and they were setting up tents, you know, the night up, so bringing that business component in too is sort of going to help with the planning of it and. Helping us to attract, uh, different businesses, uh, to our events and so on, so. Just really, um, I guess a little bit of the old, some of the new, and adding some new stuff in terms of those components is how we're approaching twenty twenty two, but we're excited. Uh, the commission, you know, is still continuing to plan it every, every month, you know, we're meeting and we're looking at these, seeing what components we can add. Questions?
Yeah, Marcus, a question and comment, uh, so if we have a lot of staff working on weekends, are there any additional staff costs associated with weekend assignments versus?
Um, not any more than usual, I'm, I'm salaried, so I work seven days a week. Um, but, you know, we do have times of year when some of our full time, we're working more than forty hours a week. We really tried doing a week to offset that by having more of a flex schedule, so instead of working on Tuesday, maybe work on Saturday. And then things like that, we're very blessed this past summer, having, having thirteen seasonal employees that are really helped in terms of setups and, and running of the events. Because the year before, the COVID, there was a lot of us still doing.
Yeah.
Now, um, so we do a pretty good job of offsetting, um, in, in terms of not having any, any overtime pay, you know. It wasn't overtime hours that we're, everyone worked out across the month.
But I, I applaud, you know, you and the, uh, parks commission, you know, looking at, you know, any ways to engage the public and. You know, I, I wouldn't overlook the fact that, you know, there's walkers, there's runners, and there's bicyclists, you know, that just.
And, you know, I, I wouldn't overlook the fact that, you know, there's walkers, there's runners and there's bicyclists, you know, that just love to have gatherings. Just love that. And it's sort of regional as well. So I, I think there's an opportunity there. The last comment is, you know, in complimenting the former treasurer, uh, Howard Pizzo, is engaging with the local business community. You gestured towards me. So I was wondering if you're confusing me or not.
But I will say to your point, you know, some of the things we also learned with the events that were coming to us and using our parks. You know, the Tri-County Bike Group, Road from Mount Hope and, um, Stockwell. And, and I have a meeting scheduled to expand on that type of event. We also have for many years, you guys, you know, the long celebration at Grant was part. That's something that we're working with them very closely because they were looking to be more inclusive to invite folks to it. So there's an opportunity for us to further embrace them, but open it up to our, our, our entire, uh, all, all the residents. And then we're finally gonna get the cricket field completed. And there's an opportunity from, you know, uh, another group of residents that play cricket. And scheduling some of their events because those cricket events are actually family events. So we're doing some of those things on a small scale, embracing what is already in the township and what goes on to, to try to make it more inclusive to everyone.
Great, thank you.
Bob, remember that Karen?
Uh, you know, I love this. I love that you are, um, reimagining Delta Rocks, one of our signature events. I've gone there for years and it really has become more of a young children, family event. And I, I, I wasn't seeing a lot of adults engaging because I don't think there were some adult type, um, activities. So, um, just hearing you say that you looked at some of the things that you had to do during COVID. And some of those things actually are favorable, um, and had favorable results. So I'm real excited to see that we're, you're reimagining it so that it can meet the needs of the different targeted audiences. Uh, cause I, I just think that, um, people like coming here and we have so much available. And I'm, I'm glad to see we're creating more opportunities for adults and doing some funky stuff, different stuff. I'd love to see more festivals here. Um, you know, I want an amphitheater. Because I'd love to see us have our own jazz concert series or whatever it is every summer or early fall. Have our own programming, as you see in Old Town or, um, Real Town or the City of Lansing. I'd like to see us do some of those, those popular programs here.
I think we're working towards it. I, I mean, the attendance that moved, that the music in our parks was just amazing. I mean, it, it was a pleasant surprise. Um, and then, you know, as, as we continue to, to draw from that, the acts that we get to, you know, very, very fortunate to have. A lot of local talent. It still draws people. I mean, like, you know, some of the bands you guys may have heard in high school are still out there. And, and it's just bringing everyone out. So we were, we're excited to not only learn that, but to see that, uh, those came out. And we'll still have the kids' class. It'll be smaller version of Delta Rocks. So, you know, the kids will get their piece. But really looking and a couple of our commissioners are really pushing more for the, the craft beer type events and. So we find a way to put those into what we do.
That's great. If you go over to just Horops right across the street, um, and I think they have a food truck. I was over there a couple of weeks ago with some girlfriends and we just had a blast. I loved the environment, loved, loved all of that. And I could see us doing something like that in our, our parks.
And I will say, we have one staff person that I put into our food trucks. We'll start now trying to, you know, inspect it. This is a challenge to run into is, is, is we have always great different food trucks that can add to our events. Of course, some have challenges of passing on inspection and therefore, yeah, we can't use them. So you'll seek out the same one or two. Um, so we're starting early with those and getting new fighters, harden, building the party. Try to get them in hospitals, but.
Excited.
Karen?
Um, so what, what are, are we looking to start this, like, next year? Be expanded? What, what is the timeframe?
This is twenty twenty-two that, that we started. You know, right now, we're wrapping up. We just had a movie in parks this past Friday. You know, we're coming off the summer. We have a few events planned for the rest of the year as, as we try to move indoors. Uh, even with the weather changing out, certainly be a challenge. Uh, we're also doing things that we learned. Like moving a lot of aerobic classes outside. We get, we continue with those. That was nice because I don't get yelled at during COVID time when we move outdoors. Someone taking space in my park. You know, we have to do it. So, um, but we learned a lot from that and we're working those in. But as the weather starts to turn here, you know, we have to get back indoors. We're still gonna have our, 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 uh, daddy door indoors. We did very well with these events out of hopes and we'll have still some of those components, you know, make a difference to our family. Event as opposed to daddy door or other sun outside, because those move back inside. So we're doing, um, you know, a lot of those over the rest of the year or the next year.
How many, like, how many days are you looking to? How many days for the, the Delta Rocks?
Instead of Delta Rocks, then the fourth Saturday, we're Delta Rock and also.
Oh, it's gonna be also, that's, that's my next question. So it would start somewhere like what? Beginning of July, it's end of August.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I would say May. You expect in May and then, you know, we'll go, I mean, moving apartment just had one last week. So, you know, we're just, just kind of a theme for us going from Delta Rocks and now Delta Rocks all summer though we're calling it. But this is, it's really, uh, all of the events will kind of follow under that name if you will.
Um, sorry. The next one was gonna be like, because I was thinking it was gonna be a little bit smaller than that. But, um, I guess the question is, do, is it something we just wanna try for next year and see how it goes? And then we'll continue or is it, it's just a thought of saying, you know what? This is what we're gonna do.
Well, I think as I shared before, we, we're pretty critical of all our events. You know, we look at them and, and some things we do well, some things, you know, we don't do as well anymore. But this is one where I think the Delta Rocks All Summer, the, the approach to, hey, let's get a lot done during a warmer weather time. It will go continue. Now, what we changed in events year to year possibly, um, you know, I mean, is it? I, I think the movie in the parks are gonna go well. So that when this course in a few years, you, you will know. But so we'll have different components that we'll look at. And, and we'll add new things. And, you know, we're adding components right now to what we have. But hopefully, you know, somebody's can spin off and be their own.
Well, my last comment, I'm grateful that you're gonna do that because it seems like I always was either training or something and I always end up missing it. And I was like, oh, like, you know, so, um, I, I kind of really like that idea. Because either, you know, parents have their kids or you, you know, the kind of thing. I think that, that will capture everyone and everyone will remember that so much better than the one day. That you have to go through all the tents and go through all the events and then finish and go through all the food trucks and then, and then you're so tired and the kids are so cranky on it. So.
And, and, and thank you for saying that, because that's gonna change a big part, just like everything else. You know, we're competing for people, for families at the warmest time of the year when they're gonna, no, or when kids have ball games. So, you know, that's why we try to spread it out. We try to hit different nights of the week and, and things like that too. So folks can come, come to some of, some of the events.
I love the content, so.
Is there a question?
Yeah, um, I wanted to say a couple of things. It's, I like the idea of bringing things into Delta Township. The cultural events and, and variety, but also building up that identity of being a part of Delta Township. And so I wanted to ask you, do you have a group of volunteers that you lean on for these events? Is that something the township does or is that something that we could start? If people wanted to, because I'm the kind of person that I would say, oh, can I help? Can I volunteer at Movies at Park or Music at Park before I would necessarily say, oh, you take my kids because they might not wanna go. So is there, is there an opportunity there? And then if we did that, could we build that into with like neighborhood identity? And say this neighborhood, this week, they're volunteering like they do at, um, like, uh, Comerica Park. Where different groups run concessions and that, that's a fundraiser, but this could just be, you know, building identity in the neighborhoods, that sort of thing.
You know, I, I think to give you an answer to that, a lot of things popped into my head. You know, I think about the Neighborhood Association and the Senior Council, we're working on, I think with the Sheriff's Department. So I think that's still maybe going on a small scale.
Okay.
We reach out to the Senior Council for some of our events, obviously, and, 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 uh, as, as far as volunteers or, or, or groups. I, you know, we're leaning on the commission for, you know, I think for a lot of that in terms of helping us to plan, uh, recruit volunteers. As, as a mention of business community, um, you know, the service groups that we're working on. So that's gonna bring us a whole new list of volunteers. Also, in, in meeting with, I mean, we're gonna, it's an opportunity for us to learn. You know, one of the things they like to see in the community, but also what can you do to help us keep, you know, do these type of events? Uh, but to have, say, a friend of the park, no, we don't. I, I like to use the answer that with, whatever commission, we have senior council. Uh, you know, we have staff, you know, I think sometimes the core groups, it, it always makes things easier. Um, but, but, you know, those are kind of folks that, that we lean on. And then also with our collaborations, you know, we collaborate with a number of, of organizations. Uh, some, some neighborhoods, you know, still will, or like the trick or treat truck, which that was an opportunity for those businesses and organizations. And, and, and folks to come out and we're able to draw on them to, to those events.
Yeah, I don't fall into any of those categories. I mean, I just had a birthday, but I'm not on senior side yet. And so I'm not in senior council and, um, you know, I don't belong to the, the Rotary or the Kiwanis or anything like that. So. Well, that's what I'm saying. You know, how can a person like me who likes to volunteer, likes to be involved in my community? You know, how, how would we find people like me and get them involved? So, you know, maybe that's just kind of an idea to put a pin in and.
You know, I think historically, we've advertised like the Delta Rocks and stuff like that. That's probably the biggest event I'm really glad to.
Yeah. Cause I have staff tables there, you know, for, I have staff tables at Delta Rocks, not for Delta Rocks, but for an organization at Delta Rocks. So, you know, I know that there are people who do that and volunteer their time.
And, 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 and we'll advertise and if you will sort of take a look at it, maybe for local advertising. I know it's, appears in the catalog or, or on the website, um, but usually our volunteers are secured through business groups. Some residents, you know, with the Delta Way with Bar and Club, they now are no longer, but I still have those volunteers. Senior council, you know, this is some volunteers. But we'll work on a, a better way to communicate that.
Okay, cool.
This is just a summary of other township funds or other major, um. Ambulance fund, economic development, which is basically used for, uh, aside grants. Capital projects, like kind of a clearinghouse for capital, uh, for saving the account for capital projects. General debt is a library bond. So that's basically offset every year by payment.
Question, according to the, was there any expenditures of the economic development?
Not at this time.
They have a fund balance of what? Sixty-one thousand?
Yeah, I was actually, yeah, normally they make a little bit of interest, not so much this year. And they have a handy.
There was writers on always last, that last year. Uh, and then keep in mind, there still is, um, Morley's had applied for a side improvement. And then there was COVID, so that's, that's still kind of outstanding. They have that move forward with that.
Yeah, just speak, they may someday.
I do. They own that building.
Okay.
They've kept in contact with Collins. He said that still their, their, their plans are still, their plans, they just, they lost a lot of their clients through COVID. So they're trying to rebuild that. So, um. I know higher end call center. So that's, their plan is still to make that kind of, uh, their, their Lansing Center. But they need to build it with clients first.
Yeah, okay.
And the fact, like I said, the fact that they own it, I put some stock into it versus.
So the ambulance fund that I know, one mill was just renewed, um. Yeah, so it's, we're gonna use a lot of, well, we've budgeted to use a lot of reserve. Now, we've been budgeted to use reserve the past couple of years, but we haven't been able to get to the full staffing that would require us to use the reserve. So the way that it is right now, if we do get to that level, um, it would use quite a bit of reserve. So it would not be sustainable over several more years. And what that means is we'd have to move employees that are being paid on the ambulance fund back to the hospital fund, which then sort of adds to our hospital fund problem. So the ambulance revenue, uh, was, you know, down somewhat in twenty twenty and kind of conservative than twenty twenty-two. Um, the budget is a little high in twenty-one. We also, you know, the safer grant was only for years. That has, was not available in twenty-one or twenty-two. So, yeah, this is definitely something that we're gonna have to keep an eye on. And like I said, worst case, you know, we put these employees back into that whole. But it's great to have. There may be a little bit of an increase to this that's not included right now. Because, um, as part of the four twenty-five area of Lansing, we can charge the operating mills from Paramedic. To that, uh, four twenty-five area. So that will help some, that's.
They have a lot of runs there.
Yeah, I don't know how often you guys go to the four twenty-five area like the GM or the, well, GM, we probably.
It was more than, more than what we thought. They, we pulled that run here, um, last year. Yeah.
So that will go to.
A year, and I think.
Oh, and then we do show bring three hundred thousand dollars as a transfer in from, um, the Reinvestment Act funds for an ambulance. And then we would do that again either in twenty-three or twenty-four, replace another one of Hope there. Would prefer not to have them both the same year, just because they may age out in the same year. So then we have water and sewer. Obviously, you know, Rick can speak to some of this, um, you know, detailed questions. The sewer fund making the large, larger, um, increases, preparing for the very large bond payments. That we're going to have from the sewer plant project. We will start paying an interest payment in twenty twenty-two. It's just very unknown what that amount will be at this point. Uh, the capital projects for the sewer, not taking into account the plants and or the Carrier Creek project. You can see some sewer wall bumps lining, the big expenses of actor, which has been planned for many years. A very important piece of equipment that needs to be replaced. So the sewer fund is in good shape. We're just recommending the seven point two five percent increase of the rate study recommended. And I do keep up the rate studies. So that's a living document. So every year, you know, we keep looking at that and using it as the projection. Because we did move a large portion of the wastewater treatment plant project into phase one. It doesn't make that per bond payment resubstantial, but I don't believe we'll be making the principal payment until twenty twenty-five. So it gives us several years to build up the funds that will make it to that. We have zero debt in the sewer fund now, which is good because we're about to add to that pretty considerably. And then again, the Carrier Creek project isn't included in here at this point. Hopefully, that will be something that we can do this year. That's just pending those events. One thing with the SRF loan is that we'll be able to pay ourselves back for the design costs we've incurred, which at this point is over a million dollars. So that will help to putting that cash back into the fund. And then water, um, water is in good shape. We just have a lot of capital expenses this year. Would also be helpful for both of these funds. The GM would get back to work. It's amazing, like, how much really they. Or, yeah, we always make a note because on that graph, it's in the annual report, it's gonna have a little dip and it's a little bit asterisk on that. Uh, water capital improvements this year, um, the Saginaw Water Main Crossing is, is in there. But if the bid doesn't come in, that, we bid and it came in, what, like four hundred, some astronomical amount, which I'm hoping is COVID pricing. So we hope to be able to get that done in twenty twenty-one. Um, the GM booster station control upgrade is probably the biggest. So we're required to provide a certain amount of pressure to that facility. And the controls are aging, um, portion of the backer because we do use that on water main breaks. Basic. The well abandonment is, you know, good news because we don't need them anymore. So we'll start making a plan for abandoning those and then what to do with the land. Yeah, lots of pond water projects.
And pull up those runs, the four twenty-five, this whole is, is almost a thousand runs, but it was spread over, uh, eight to ten years. And pull up those runs, the four twenty five, it's almost a thousand runs, but it was spread over eight to ten years. Oh, it's still, yeah, fairly public safety.
They might have liked that from.
That's basically three, I mean, three large businesses in there, so.
Right. Or water, light, or new energy plant, what are they going on like?
If we have runs there, we they just get built correctly, right? Or you mean fire runs?
So, yeah.
They don't get, they they don't get built for fire runs if somebody, for an ambulance run. Their insurance would cover it. There's no. Just like anywhere else in the township.
Right, right, yeah. But it would follow the twenty four, twenty five agreements. It's separate entity.
Correct, yeah. The the four twenty five, the four twenty five area operates just the same. It's just the city of Lansing collects our paramedic millage and then submits it to us. So the, but the services operate the same.
Okay. And they get the old, so is that, refresh my memory on that, so. They collect the operating revenue, so it's not based on runs, it's just they just through the agreement that they just returned it to us, is that part of the?
Four twenty five area for the suppliers, they, um. So the city of Lansing knows the assessing and they, um, they prepare the tax bills. Um, but they include our paramedic knowledge, our library knowledge, everything else is Lansing knowledge, which we then get fifty percent of. Same with, uh, well, I think in the village, is it, do we get fifty percent or sixty percent, I think, of the property tax? And then the, uh, of the income taxes, fifty fifty split in the four twenty five area.
The BWL plant is not forty twenty five, you're correct.
No, pardon me.
I said the BWL plant is not forty one.
No. But they do not, they do not pay property taxes, that's right, right, unfortunate. All they will pay is a little water.
Because they do pay payments and a little tax is the city of Lansing.
No, they don't.
They have no help.
Water, water, like, it's not. Well, I don't call what you want. They give twenty four million dollars a year. They do do that.
Yes, they do.
They call it a return on equity.
I think the city takes.
Twenty four million.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, just a question regarding, um. The franchise fees, I know when that, um, loss occurred, there was some discussion. I just don't know if there's an appetite for further discussion on, do we want to look at ways to maybe replace that? Are we looking to go to residents to ask for millage or something? To replace those dollars, do something with it, or, um, to help offset as we're getting tighter in here? So I didn't know if that's gonna come out, if that's a strategic plan discussion, or where you saw that entering supervisor Fletcher.
Yeah, I think it's probably more of a strategic element for this budget year. There's any vision of having any tax increases take place. For this year, but definitely as part of our long term planning, it should be considered.
And also with the sheriff's substation, you are the funding of that, and whether it's funding the building or it's funding. Public safety as a whole, and then using a portion of that on the building, you know, there's a lot of conversations to be had there.
To that point, if I may, uh, we're talking about it anyway for government budget. I was gonna suggest that we ask staff to kind of analyze the different. Revenue enhancement strategies that the board could consider, you know, in the in the area in the longer term future. Uh, cuz there's a number of, you know, avenues, and, um, I think it takes some time for staff to analyze those. You know, consider the pros and cons of that, that we have at least several options for the board to consider. You know, moving forward in the future. So some of these will be coming up as opportunities sooner than later, so I think it'd be appropriate to to ask staff to. Undertake that analysis and come back for the board and some other future meeting, for discussing a lot of those lines. Is that sound reasonable to? It's a topic of conversation. Any overall questions, support thing or anything, or comments or anything? According, what was your, what's your favorite part of the budget?
No, I like, I liked all the meetings with the department heads, learn about.
Process.
Their needs, and then, you know, I think we got really good conversations, and even though we needed to exclude everything, you know, that they wanted, uh, I think that it was. Helpful to know their priorities and, you know, I think they need a lot of stuff worked on.
Correct, it's good cross-communication.
Yeah.
And do I understand the, uh, timeline from here out there for the budget?
Yeah, so typically, well, last year, everything was advanced a little bit. That might have been because, you know, drop of leaving. So typically, the boards adopted the budget in November. Last year, it was adopted in October. So we can do another committee, the whole meeting in October and adopt it in November. Or if you're pretty comfortable, really the big changes are the insurance, which you should have next week. And we could do the ad for the public hearing and adopt it in October, probably. So, you know, just kind of, well, people are ready to to do so.
When did you think you were gonna get the the percentage?
I'm hoping next week.
Okay.
Yeah, so we could have the pu- public hearing at the first meeting in October for the second meeting. Yeah, or like I said, I mean, it's fine to do it in the month of fall.
Well, I'm hoping you'll be surprised. I know, um, having worked in insurance for thirty years, um, the the underwriting cycle, there's like a five year myth. That you'll have three years, two good years, or two years and three bad years. So I don't know where we are.
Right, well, we've only gotten them now for two, so I don't know if that's good or bad.
It might be good.
We didn't have, David, you've already gone through the utilization reports, and we didn't have fixed bikes or unusual utilization, so that should help.
And we've had retirements, that, you know, that helps too.
Well, the retirees are on a manana plan, and that's also helpful. And that was only like two or three percent this year.
I think the big thing, if you were to cross your fingers for our grant for the SCBA's. Um, AF, assistance of firefighters grant, and then, uh, we are still, you know, I don't know how it'll work out. Does not sound like this iteration. We still have the area, um, we submitted for an earmark for that in the state budget. Uh, so that would be, that would be like hitting the lottery, but I'm hoping that would still come through.
Okay, well, let's move on now to the strategic planning discussion.
All right, well, appreciate, uh. There's patience, it's been a little while since we actually had our strategic planning session with Lou, um, so we. Received his notes from those meetings, uh, put it together into a document, and then over the summer, met with different, uh. Directors, did it in two or three different iterations due to vacations and that type of thing to help try to fill out some of the, um. Some of the strategic plans, so, uh, I wanted to get a draft to you, uh, tonight and, uh. Uh, first thank Alana for really helping to put a lot of this together, and then Mary Whirlin always makes it into a, uh, very. Um, attractive document, um, so I appreciate.
Mary, have you asked her, or does she know when we're gonna get these headshots, since I'm the odd duck out here and all the noisy headshots?
She, um, uh, she has been asking me, uh, over and over. I always forget to mention it at the board meeting, so it's, uh, it's up to the, you know, up to the board if, uh. Everybody wants us to, you know, schedule some new headshots and, um.
Well, I at least would like to have one that has a similar background, if everybody's gonna keep theirs, so that's consistent.
That's gonna get what you get.
I like when they use four or five or six year olds.
Or we could just send back to get a picture of the same background.
Well, that's what I said. That's what they did with me.
I will have, uh, I will have, I'll have Mary schedule one, but it was my, it was my fault. She's asked me several times. I have, uh, forgotten, so, so we provided an introduction and an overview, um, and then on, uh. Uh, the next page there, um. Really focused in on the the key areas that were identified, uh, in our strategic planning sessions, which were mainly community vitality. Community connectedness and the infrastructure, so you probably recognize those, uh, some of the objectives that we had underneath those. We moved around after discussion with staff to kind of fit them into more, uh, I would say, more strategic type, um. Uh, heading, uh, or fit better under certain goals or kind of group some of these, so, um, starting with the. Community vitality, and and I'm assuming all of you had a chance to read through these, we tried to capture some of the key objectives that were discussed. Uh, encourage diverse population, beautify Saginaw corridor, economic development, public health. Um, uh, keep in mind, as we discuss these with the, uh, with the directors, we really kind of focused in on one. And what we, you know, what we're set up to do, what we can't do to advance, uh, some of these, uh, looking at what we. You know, have done in the past, what we can do in the future, um, some things that we may have discussed, uh, during the strategic planning. And we can always add them back in, but there's certain things that really as a township, we, we, uh, either don't do or, um. Uh, you know, just not set up to do, I mean, we have certain services that we provide, um, and and that type of thing. So while there's, uh, several things that would be nice to do, we're just not really set up to do them and, and certain services that are maybe provided by. Other agencies, uh, but certainly, um, you see a lot of focus on collaboration with different things, so. Um, and I don't know, Mr. Supervisor, if you want to, if you want me to walk through each of these, or just kind of go through the. The plan in general first.
Just the plan in general. I think we've all had a chance to read it.
Sure, um, so, yeah, and then community connectedness, uh, park developments and pathways, one of the things. To keep in mind here, we we already, you know, want the strategic plan to be a good representation of, uh, the township. And the things that we're doing, um, but it's also, we do have a lot of different plans. We have our parks master plan, we have our. Uh, our regular, um, master plan, we have our non-motorized development plan, we have our water reliability studies. We have, uh, in our capital improvements plan each year, so we have a lot of plans that, and if already reflect a lot of strategies. In different, um, uh, in the different genres, so to speak, so parks development and pathways, we kept somewhat. General in terms of continuing to implement those plans, uh, community events, uh, Marcus talked about public art. Uh, there was, seemed to be a lot of support among the board of trying to push forward those initiatives, uh, so we have that built out pretty well. Identity and branding, that was something that was in our last strategic plan, um, and expanded on here. And an infrastructure, uh, this has obviously been a key focus the last few years, so we have maintaining and improving infrastructure. Many of these things you'll recognize, uh, and stuff that are kind of ongoing, uh, it's difficult with. Infrastructure, cuz everything ties together, and I think the systematic efforts that, you know, particularly Ernie and Rick have undertaken. Um, you know, really span over a lot of years, so there's a lot of, uh, things that build on different things. Uh, one of the new bullet points you'll see here is continue to utilize and enhance GIS for data needs and decision making. So we are working with the OHM to, um, uh, kind of look at and assess our, our current GIS. Um, and how we can use that and, uh, specifically use that for better, uh, decision making. Um, one example, what that can be used for is, uh, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we bought new television equipment for Rick to assess. Uh, um, sanitary lines that are fifteen inches and under, so all that data has to go somewhere. So being able to pull that up on a street and say, you know, okay, from this, you know, from this street to this street. And actually pull up a video or a condition of that pipe, uh, is very helpful for as we make decisions or even. Uh, do modeling and that type of thing. Uh, strong public safety, uh, obviously something that, that's another carryover. Uh, from the last strategic plan, but was talked about by several, uh, board members. Um, and with a strong focus on the sheriff, rebuilding the sheriff's substation. Um, we had, uh, key staffing and sustainability were some ideas that were mentioned along with regionalism and continuing to, uh. Um, dialogue with our regional partners, um, and how that looks, we did not build out specific. Uh, because those, again, those are kind of ongoing relationships that we try to to build and maintain, um, and take advantage of opportunities. Uh, as we go, uh, go on, um, it also included just some strategic initiatives that we've already committed to. Over the next five years, some of these were are major initiatives, like the wastewater stuff, uh, the Carrier Creek project. And we'll list station rebuild, um, some of them are, uh, smaller, the DNR grants that, uh, are outstanding. That we've already, um, been successful with, so, um, and then we had a page on implementation. I know that Lou, uh, when he worked, uh, worked through the strategic planning. I think some of the idea was to take some of these larger things and and have some kind of ongoing discussions at future board meetings. Uh, so I didn't, I don't have necessarily a schedule built out, and be kind of curious to hear, you know, um. People's thoughts on that, but, uh, you know, with that said, this is, um, you know, draft plan, any strategic plan is really dynamic. So it's, you know, kind of subject to change and ongoing and, uh, just looking for feedback and. Areas, uh, where, um, you can add or fell short.
I think you guys did a very good, uh, discussion and the dialogue that took place during the, you know, strategic plan that we did. So I pretty appreciate the work that the staff put into that, uh, capturing that, because a lot of things were being discussed, thrown out sometimes. And it's hard to get it all down on paper, and you guys did a really great job. I think it's laid out in a nice way to help the public understand what it is. That we're trying to accomplish and to achieve here, and it's on all the key areas of, uh, you know, what what we want to do. And with some concrete bits that are gonna work on, so I think that the strategic plan was really good, that you guys, that you came up.
I just wanna say thank you for putting the implementation at the end to further explain that, because. Somebody really looking at this, and you're like, well, how's it, so they kind of, you give a really nice short description that, hey, this is ongoing. It's a five year plan, um, and we'll update it as we kind of go along, so. I know it sounds like a small thing, but it really is a big thing. Can you look at it when somebody look at it? I think it it condenses everything. Yeah, I just thought, I just wanted to make.
So, um, could we expect under the umbrella of this document, um, you know, short little one, either of, well, this is what we're gonna do. Progress in twenty twenty one, and then, you know, this is what we're gonna do in twenty twenty two, and help this plan. So that we have those short term goals, and we know where we're going, to see how it fits into the longer term goals.
Yeah, I've, you know, I've thought about that, um, quite a bit, so I think it, I think it really depends on, you know, and certainly I'm. Uh, um, interesting in meeting the the board's expectations on that, um. With, I I'd have to do, I guess, you know, go through that and think about how that would work. Some of these, you know, like the wastewater plant. Uh, some of these, you know, like the wastewater plant, you know, we have kind of ongoing updates and that type of thing. So, um, so some of those, you know, I guess I would probably and the same thing for like sheriff's substation, they'll be kind of ongoing, um, updates. So on some of the other things, uh, trying to figure out how we effectively do some updates. Um, and, you know, applying timelines to, it might not be exact timeline, but maybe more of steps that we've taken, that type of thing, if we want to do that.
I think kind of akin to what Marcus did for Delta R Us all summer is here's our general idea, here's our general plan of when we want to do this and that sort of thing. But it gives us an idea of how we're, we're working on our community effectiveness. It's something we can talk to residents about, um, and we can say, this is when it's gonna actually happen.
Sure.
So, you know, without dollars and cents and the actual hours, you know, that kind of level of detail, but just, you know, stuff that gets us excited about what's in, what's in the playbook.
Yeah. Another thing we can talk about internally, again, don't have it totally fleshed out is, but, you know, including this into making it kind of dynamic on the website. So you know, as we, as we do things, a lot of times people, uh, as we get, as we do projects, people don't necessarily and we can do a better job of that of bring things to the board of identifying, you know, why it fits into a strategic, um, initiative, because there's not a lot that we do that doesn't fit into some type of strategy. Um, so kind of, uh, build that out to kind of showcase, uh, that. So, um, folks know that we, um, you know, are putting effort into, you know, strategic plans and and some of our strategic initiatives.
Barbara. Yeah, thank you. Um, impressive work. Very impressive work pulling all this stuff together. It's exciting. Two things I wanted to just mention. One, I want to make sure we're mindful of something that came out loud and clear to me that I walked away from is capacity from our team. So I, I don't want to overburden, overpromise, underdeliver and lose people by saying this is all the stuff we're gonna do. So I know that was a big-ticket item of, um, an issue or, um, something that we needed to address. Are we taking on, are we putting too much out there that really could add stress to your team or, um, to, to our team? I wouldn't want to do that. So I want to, I'd want to be mindful of what we're putting out there. So we're not overpromising and underdelivering and overtaxing our team. Um, and the other thing I thought to consider is everything is really about community, which I love. We talked about that loud and clear. What I'm, what I think would be a great opportunity to include is community engagement somewhere in here where we invite them to join this journey with us by, um, being a part of some of these new ideas. Maybe there's someplace on the website where they can drop an idea or a box to drop an idea here, um, something that, um, encourages them that this is, this is you. It's not just us putting out, but, you know, participate where you can. Infrastructure stuff and all that stuff. But we're, we're, you know, when it talks about creating a new culture in our community or expanding where we are, such a great opportunity. And we'd be missing the boat if we didn't use community engagement as a part of this great document.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments on capacity. I asked Courtney to add eight or nine positions and she.
But in, in all seriousness. Every time we do a project that adds a pathway, we stretch our parks department even more and we are at a where the rubber band is stretched about as far as we can go right now. And I think that we need to remember that every time we add a pathway, it's gotta be plowed and it's gotta be mowed.
Here, there, here.
Right here.
And look at the use they have.
I'm not saying don't do it. I'm saying we need to accommodate staff. I mean, we need to, we need to include staff when we are willing to expend the money. There needs to be a part of that expense that is directed towards more staff.
Yes.
Um, I, I think this is fine. It's understandable, succinct. Uh, and it's a good basis to, uh, compare, you know, where we're at in a year or two or whatever. Uh, but I do remember making a comment with the moderator. Nowhere for us to really understand our township. I think it would be helpful for this board to, uh, whenever it's possible and the data is there from the census is to really get an idea of what the makeup of this township is today than it was ten years ago and what that trend is, is pointing towards. So, um, whenever staff has that information, that census information for Delta Township that's available to you, um, I'd like to see us, uh, have a discussion of that information, uh, a future, uh, made of a whole meeting.
We already have it in the parks office. I have everything.
Well, great. Then let's schedule it in the next meeting.
I don't have the, I don't have the twenty, the twenty-ten comparison data. I don't know if that was captured. And I forgot to have to look at it again.
I don't know what's out yet, other than the general population, but we can certainly provide, uh,
Well, I'm talking about the breakdowns, you know, you know, in different age groups, ethnicities, you know, uh, school age versus non-school age, you know, all of that stuff. It may not be, but I mean.
Same school age.
Of what we were, we were talking about, like, that was an integral understanding that needs to be um, reviewed, uh, by this, by any governing board to really understand what the makeup of their residents are. Because it's, it changes all the time. So, so I just wanted to put that out for future discussion when that information may give it a certainty. Other comments? Oh, great. Brian, I think you did a good job of capturing now what we did. That's fantastic.
That I get credit of Alana and Mary Worland.
Well, anything else? Has there been more race for me here?
Sure. As you know, I attended the CIA board meeting today. And, uh, there was a lot of good discussion, a lot of questions. Uh, I sat back there and I couldn't hardly hear anything. Voices don't carry well in this room. And I know that this has capacity for being, um, televised, streamed and recorded. And there is a microphone system here. But if I was any resident that wanted to try to listen to what was going on here, not just the voices, but this being muffled by the masks and the fact that I think that, you know, this is some really important stuff that's being discussed by the CIA board that we're making recommendations for the border trustees to consider. And I just think that should be captured because it's really important. So I would like, I would prefer to see that the CIA meetings, if they're gonna be in this room, that they actually be using the technology. So if you cannot be here, you can actually watch it and you can hear it because even in the back of the room, I could not hear what was going on.
So is your issue, you want us to work on a sound system for this room or is the issue you want it?
There's already one here. I'm just saying.
But zooming and hearing in the room is two things. If you're zooming it, somebody said in the audience can't hear. That's what you started the conversation with. So are you asking us to approve the sound system in here so people can hear or do you want just soon?
Well, let me break it down for you. I think this thing should be zoomed. People to, to be able to see when these important discussions, these policy discussions are being done. And just to remind people that in this room, you cannot hear in the back room. You know, it's just, you know, this is not a criticism, but people tend to like lower their voices. You have a mask on, it's hard to hear. And if you're back there and you're facing this way, you cannot hear what's going on. So I just, we need to be cognizant that our voices just don't carry well when we're wearing masks, is what I'm saying.
So would you, would you like to see a sound system put in?
There is a sound system.
There, there, there isn't. There's no speakers to amplify the room.
No, no, not to amplify. I'm, I'm saying to remind people, it just, when you're in the meeting, to speak loud enough so people in the back or ask people in the back if they can hear as a, as a matter of courtesy. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, well, everybody remember that one right in here. Speak up, please. I can hear you.
Is there a reason why the CIA board can't use the main meeting room with the microphone? For their meetings? Are there other meetings at three on every Monday?
Not always. I think we decided to meet here because it's a small and more intimate, uh, they have a conversation as a group as opposed to sitting on a big dice where you're not looking at each other and them and them.
There are a number of times when A would not be available. I don't know how often CIA meets, if they're meeting weekly.
No, every couple of weeks or so.
On a Monday at three P M.
But, you know, I'm curious how this picks up. And then there is a camera. So this actually could allow people to, you know, witness and, you know, the meetings as they are.
I think that kind of begs the question, is it more important that the CIA board feel comfortable in a smaller room as a board so they can have a conversation? Or is it more important that they be in a room where the public can attend, it can be recorded and they have microphones so that everyone can hear what they say?
I think that they would be open to meeting anywhere over another room. We can't hear because the public can't attend here. The public, uh, you know, can participate if they would like to participate.
Well, unless there were too many, it couldn't fit. So if there was a large public.
And I would certainly, I, I support addressing both things. Um, see an issue with, if we can do more likes when you do use this room or try to use the other room. But using, we, we invested in upgrading our technology last year. I think we should use it. Um, I think the meeting should be on Zoom. I, I would like to see them personally. I can't always get here. But, um, it's all, I definitely am interested. We don't do a TIF every day. So I, I would love to see us put it on Zoom and then I can catch it or anybody else. It would really be helpful because this is pretty big for us. I know it's big for me. You've done this sort of stuff for years. I, but for me, capturing a full understanding because we're gonna have to take that big vote one day is helpful. My perspective.
Sure, we can have a part discussion on which meetings should be covered and true.
I'd say cover them all. I, I don't know why I would not cover some and cover the other. We have the technology. Um, it's great and, um, it gives our community an opportunity to be engaged. So I, if, if that could be considered, I would give them all. That'd be great. Thank you.
Uh, the census data that you're discussing, the, uh, they introduced something called differential privacy this year that kind of protects some people's identity. Like if you have, let's say you have like ten native. They might actually report there's fifteen or twenty. At the state level, that information is accurate, but when you get down to a smaller level, like at a township level, it's less accurate. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, that it may not be a hundred percent accurate, but it'll be close.
So the margin of error then though would be a small whole numbers or would they be large?
It would depend.
It really, it really varies. And there's no, there's no way of determining it exactly.
And you don't know which ones are moved. Like you said, this, and this is Patrick Walk, who's one of our precinct chairs for elections and is our guru for census and data and working with us on our redistricting. So like what he's saying, so percentage-wise, if they have a change of four or five residents in a particular area from there's really thirteen of this nationality and, and it's reported as seventeen, that's a significant percentage difference. If you look at the percentage, the number's only four, but four of that is twenty-five percent difference.
Right, right.
Why did he use that?
It's to protect individuals. It's, what was the term again, Patrick?
Differential privacy.
Differential privacy. Because we have, um, I think part of it is because we've become a country that, um, is not necessarily open and accepting. And so to protect small groups so that it's less difficult for someone to identify exactly where someone is.
Well, notwithstanding that with the caveat that you said, I, you know, I think it's the larger trends, you know, I mean, the larger whole numbers. So, yes, you have one ethnicity, now you have two, that's a hundred percent increase. So, but it's one person. So, um, but again, I mean, I think what we would be interested in this board is the trends. Not just in like ethnicity, for example, but also, you know, the age demographics and then things like that. Maybe the income levels if it's possible or whatever.
Still, it's still gonna not be our.
All right. And so let me ask you, what do you suggest? That we don't look at it or?
No, no, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying as a, just as a caveat, that it's not gonna be a hundred percent accurate.
All right.
So.
Well, I think any census.
Comparing it to twenty-ten because if this was not in place.
Sure, but I, I think, you know, you know, uh, pick, pick your timeframe after the census completed, it's not accurate either.
Right. It should still give you a decent I P O.
Yeah. That's what I was, that's what I think we need to have in this, as a decision-making body. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, Samuel, for the, is this the course we hired here?